Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Board regular meeting, April 24th, 2019, for the City of Cape Canaveral, held here in City Hall. Patsy, would you call a roll, please?
Lamar Russell?
Here.
Harry Pearson?
Here.
Melissa Bass?
Here.
Penny Zurker?
Here.
John Price?
Here.
And at the present time, we only have five board members, so we're all in attendance. Dave, do I have to worry about the discussion of public participation on this?
Yeah, I mean generally, you invite anybody who thinks is going to speak to fill out a card.
People in the audience, if there's anything that you want to comment on tonight, feel free to do so. There are cards outside there that we would like you to fill out.
Actually, they're right here.
Please, oh, Patsy has them, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Fill them out with your name and information requested. Turn them in to us so that we know who we're talking with. Okay. Moving on to old business. Are there any? Oh, we got one. All right. I see no old business. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about in terms of old business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Oh, woo, woo.
Go ahead, Harry.
It's an old one. We don't have any old business. It comes up at the end after we have done the agenda.
Right.
If you've got anything to add, you add it afterward. Just my comment.
Well, in December, we had a kind of a floating applicant for the board, Mr. Parker. Where, what has, what has happened with that? And in fact, take one step further, if you would, and tell me what you have. We have two vacancies right now on the board.
We can talk about that, Harry, in.
Do you want to drop that down?
Open discussion.
Point of order.
Yeah, open discussion.
You want to put it, we're looking at the minutes.
No, we're not.
Parker was on the minutes in December.
We haven't gotten to the minutes yet.
I thought we had.
No.
Sorry. I'll take it back.
Okay. We move on to new business. Now we need to talk about approval of the minutes of the last meeting, December 13th.
Ah.
I'm assuming that all the board members have had the opportunity to look the minutes over. I would like to give you the opportunity to make any comments, corrections, as necessary, before we move for approval. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Harry?
No.
Okay. Penny?
No, I'm fine.
Melissa?
Nope.
Lamar?
No, I move we approve them as submitted.
Second.
Lamar makes a motion for approval. Penny makes a motion for second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? All right. So we move on to new business, Agenda Item Number Two. And this is the, "Planning and zoning board shall elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson by majority vote at the first meeting held in January or the first meeting after January." And that's today. So the five of us have to come up with recommend, or recommendations for a chairperson and a vice-chairperson. And so we'll do, we have to do each one of those individually. So let's talk about chairpersons. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion for a chairperson from this point forward, for the next, what, two years, I think it is?
I, I recommend the chairperson be Penny Ziegler.
Okay. Are there any seconds for that?
Well, I'll second it just to get it on the ballot.
We also want to.
I have, I have a nomination too.
Any other nominations? Yeah. Go ahead. Lamar?
Nominations aren't closed.
Nope, they're not.
So I nominate John Price for chairperson.
Need a second for that? I'll, I'll second it. Are there any other recommendations or nominations for chairperson?
Okay, wait a minute. Who seconded it?
I did. No other nominations?
Move nominations, we closed.
Second for closing nominations?
Second.
Okay. Nominations are officially closed. So for chairperson, we need to take a vote. How do we do that?
You would take them in the order that the nominations were received, and the first person to receive a majority would be the chair.
So the vote would be on me first?
Correct.
Yeah. So the first person nominated was Penny, board. All in favor of Penny being the new director, the new Planning and Zoning Board Chairman?
Or should I take a roll call on how?
You want to do that?
Yeah, that would be easier for me to keep track that way.
Okay.
Okay, so for Penny. Lamar Russell?
Against.
Harry Pearson?
For.
Melissa Bass?
For.
Penny Zurker?
Penny, speak your mind, don't you? Please.
Presidential candidates.
Yeah.
Both of them say.
Speak your mind.
I don't have a big opinion one way or the other. For, I guess.
Okay.
I'm willing to do the job, so I'll say for.
Okay, great.
All right.
But I do want to say, I think Mr. Price, you do an excellent job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And did not walk in here expecting this to happen by any means.
Penny, you're not hurting my feelings at all.
John Price?
Against.
Okay, so we have three, four, two against. I don't think there's any reason to take the next one, right?
I think that does it.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. And now we'll do the same thing for the vice chairman. Nominations are open for vice chairman.
I nominate John Price.
Oh, God.
I second that nomination.
I, I nominate Lamar Russell.
Okay.
And I second that motion.
Okay. Hold, hold, stop the process.
The shorthand comes into play here, Patsy.
Nice.
We can read two.
All right, so, okay, there's a motion for John, and a second for John. Lamar made the first motion, and Penny second.
Yes.
All right. And then the second nomination was for Lamar?
Yep.
Harry made that.
Harry.
And I second.
And John.
Wait a minute. We did, we not, we had a nomination for John Price, for vice chairman. I was not mentioned yet.
Yeah, you were.
Okay.
After.
The nomination was made.
After I seconded, Harry did mention, did nominate.
It was moving very quickly there.
Yeah, it was.
I've been known to be wrong before.
Are there any other nominations? All right, then let's call a roll for the vice chairman, starting with John Price. Uh, starting with the nomination for John Price, I'm sorry.
Okay, so for John Price. Lamar Russell?
For.
Harry Pearson?
Against.
Melissa Bass?
For.
Penny Zurker?
For.
John Price?
It doesn't matter at this point, does it? It doesn't matter. So I'll say against.
I want your experience to help me here.
The reluctant vice chairman.
Okay, so we have a new board. Penny is the new chairman, and I am the vice chairman. So do I turn the gavel over to Penny right now?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney.
I think the nominee, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Congratulations. I'm not going to change the name tags with you.
That's okay. That's okay. Was it, it was a surprise. All right, we moving on to consideration and recommendation to City Council regarding Ordinance Number 092019 to amend Section 110-28 of the City Code related to due process and special local requirements, City of Cape Canaveral applicant. And we do have some speakers on this. We'll start with Pat Campbell.
My name is Pat Campbell, 307 Surf Drive, Cape Canaveral. If I understand, what you're talking about is the removal of certified mail for zoning changes?
Correct.
Okay. I heard, I believe, the second reading at the last city council meeting.
I believe it was the first reading.
First reading.
First reading, yes.
In any case, there was a great deal of discussion about the reason to do this. It was presented that it was primarily monetary, that we were trying to reduce the cost to the citizens. So after that, I did ask exactly, because we're doing math exercises and coming up with numbers that, I don't, I don't know what validity they had, so I'd asked Mr. Dickey to provide me the empirical data, how much it actually costs the city to do this. And in the process of getting that information, which I didn't get any information about what the actual cost was, I did find that it's a pass-through cost, that it doesn't cost anybody but the applicant. So we're saving money for the applicant. I realize that the city may very well be the applicant, but primarily it's developers. And I certainly agree, they ought to pay to ensure the people that are affected know what kind of zoning change is being made. And I think the application of certified mail is one way to be able to prove that the mail was sent. But I think there might be alternatives, but I didn't hear any alternatives. We've just immediately jumped to, it's going to cost money to do certified mail, so let's do regular mail, when the real question is, what paper trail exists after the fact? I personally have been affected in two occasions where zoning changes were being made and the notification was done improperly. The only way to be able to determine that is if you can go back and find out if the mailings were done, and if they were, where did it go? Certified mail is one way to do that. I do not believe that regular mail would do that. There may be another alternative, but there was nothing presented as an alternative. So no alternative was presented, and no empirical data about the cost was presented, and it isn't a saving to the citizens, it's a saving to the applicant. I'm all for saving money, I might very well be an applicant, but I think that cost should be the burden of the applicant, and I think the proof that the notification was made is best done with certified mail, or some reasonable alternative that provides that proof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, don't sit down, I've got a question for you. First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
And, so, okay, do you have a, do you have a suggested alternative?
When was this council meeting? There hasn't been very many days between the council meeting where I heard it, and today. I'd certainly like to have the opportunity to go see if there are alternatives. I think there are, I'm just not prepared to offer one in light of not having one, and I would stick with the certified mail until we actually had a good alternative. I just don't know what it is.
I used to do a little management for the government, and I always told my employees, if you bring a problem into the office, you don't get to leave it. You get to bring a solution, or you get to take it with you. So, okay, you've identified the problem. What's the solution? And that's the question.
I'd be more than happy to do some research and present you with an alternative, but I just have not anticipated the need to do that, but I'd be more than willing to.
I don't see why, if you, if you use regular mail, you can't keep a logbook of all the That's what City of Cocoa does, for the water bill. I noticed that was in some of our writings for this meeting today. So that's, that's one thing that could be done, just keep a logbook of all the mailout. But that's, okay, that's why I say so.
Anyone else?
Did I, did I get an action to go give you an alternative?
No, not at this time, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to just comment on that.
Absolutely.
We do keep a logbook. We have a, our, our application process is, the applicant is required to submit to us a, basically a prepaid, or actually, pre-prepared labels that the applicant gets from the Brevard County Property Appraisers Office. And there's the actual stack or list of labels that are already adhesive, you know, they have adhesive on, we can just put them on the envelopes. And along with that comes a, I'll call it a receipt copy, that is a copy of all of those same addresses that we're sending out to. So in effect, that is our logbook. We have a record of who those mail, that mail was sent to. And we also keep a copy of the postage by total and number of pieces of mail that goes out. So we do track that. And so I, I appreciate Mr. Campbell's concern about there being a paper trail and there being some accountability. I think that's really what he's talking about, that there's, there was proof that a letter was sent out, and received. That's what you do get with the certified mail, but we do have the proof that the, at least, that the letters were sent out and to what address.
I do believe many governments, as Mr. Russell has said, at the desire to reduce cost, which is what a lot of our taxpayers want us to do, at $7.50 to send a certified with request versus the current rate, 56, 58 cents. And while, in some cases, it is an individual who would pay that out, there are cases where it is the government, so it is an opportunity. But having an accountability is going to be a key.
Ms. Chairman, I, to piggyback on the comment that you just made, our staff has reached out to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven municipalities in Brevard County in the last, in the last couple of days, to poll them, to see exactly what, I'll call it best practice is, with respect to mailings regarding zoning matters. And every one of them does not use certified mail. They use regular mail. The only exception to that is the City of Satellite Beach. They do use certified mail for subdivisions, and that's really not a matter that we're discussing this evening, so, but for Satellite Beach's land use decisions, they, they use regular mail, so. So I think, I'll call it a best practice, in Brevard County at least, currently it's regular mail, first class.
Well, you're provided three minutes, and you've already been given that, sir. Board want to hear from him to come back up again? I think, thank you, sir. Our next speaker would be Wes Morrison.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, new Chairwoman Zurker.
Chairman's fine, I'm not into the difference there.
Thank you, congratulations. Wes Morrison, 7640 Ridgewood Avenue. Thank you all for serving us. I have some notes here prepared, and first I want to say, I've got three main reasons why Cape Canaveral Planning and Zoning Board should not move forward with this ordinance, and I hope that we take them seriously. Number one, the P&amp;Z Board and public have not been given sufficient and consistent seven days to consider this amendment in public record access. Our public record access has been denied for a limited amount of time. The issue is that this notice and agenda was posted.
Excuse me, Mr. Morrison, may I interrupt you for one minute, because you are on our city council? I'd like to ask the attorney, is it, we're quasi-judicial, that our recommendation goes to the council, is, is it okay for us to?
I think in this circumstance it is, because this matter is not quasi-judicial. This would be basically a text amendment to the zoning code, which would be a legislative matter.
I do apologize if you'd like to start over, that's fine. I just wanted to protect all of us in that, so I apologize.
And I, and I got a first opinion with Anthony, who cleared me up, but thank you for looking out. If I could start the clock over, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The, the issue was that the agenda went out two and a half days later than what I would say is expected, on a Friday afternoon, just before a very busy Easter weekend. And if you look at, and then the second issue was the next day, public records had limited access. So if you wanted to go in and verify this data and show you back at 2008, some of the things that, that were decided upon when this exact issue came back, we couldn't, and people were spending time with their families. The precedent was set on state Florida statutes say that seven days is reasonable, I'm sorry, reasonable notice needs to be given. I say that Cape Canaveral has shown that seven days is reasonable by, first of all, city ordinance with council agendas go out seven days prior. That's written into our ordinances. Secondly, your agendas usually go out, most recently, as far back as I can find, seven days early, so you should have received this on a Wednesday. Now, you might feel comfortable in the night that you've got enough facts, but I'm speaking on behalf of the public as well. The, the, due to the magnitude of this, this isn't a lightweight issue of rezoning, and what rezoning does to people's properties, it puts restrictions on it, I would say that we seriously consider giving ourselves more time. The second reason is that the P&amp;Z Board and public deserve better data. Mr. Campbell came up here and spoke and said, have you provided a solution? And what I think is very interesting is that the city staff has not provided a solution. They provided what they believe is the best. And when you go back to the 2008 data, city comparative data that David just rattled off, was actually provided in printed format where you could verify it. Alternative solutions do exist, and the proposed record keeping with the City of Cocoa is not something that's going to hold up in the court of law, in my opinion. I believe that return receipts and certified mail is the most sure way, otherwise they wouldn't have a market. The second thing is, the data that you've been given, I challenge. I think that the data is inaccurate. At $7.50, which you've quoted, I have already shown to be inaccurate. The 5,000 people has already shown to be inaccurate. I've given, you weren't provided cost breakdowns of how much is labor. And the point that I want to make is, when I asked for the cost breakdowns, which you deserve to have, is I was given a 70 cents per person on certified mail. Well, if you do the math on that, at 70 cents, on an average of $20 per hour, it's going to take us two months to package 7,000 pieces of mail. The alternative solution would be easily to outsource it, if you wanted to, but you weren't given that data to factor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morrison, you've reached your three minutes.
And may I please give my final reason, if you don't mind, please? And the final, and, and most important reason is that the P&amp;Z Board should review this first, this process first. Out of precedence, you've always reviewed planning and zoning issues first, and I want to point you to Section 110.3 of the City Code, where it says, "No problem or situation relating to zoning shall be submitted to the city council prior to being submitted to and acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Board," specifically Item 3, it says, "Review and revision of zoning sections," and I leave you with that. I believe that process has been broken. You deserve to review this before we did, and I ask that you seriously review Section 110.3 of our zoning before you move forward on this matter. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. I do want to say that while you were speaking, Mr. Morrison, I did look up the actual cost of certified mail with return receipt from just the post office, and that is $6.80. Still quite a bit of money. Mr. Dickey, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. I would have appreciated Mr. Morrison coming and speaking to me about some of his concerns before the meeting. He did voice a few of those at the council meeting, so all of that, all of those weren't new. So, but I would have enjoyed to have that conversation with him. And the same city attorney who he called and talked to, to get a green light to come and address this board tonight, is the same city attorney that advised me personally that because of the expeditious nature that we're trying to move this forward, that the City Code allowed the first reading of the ordinance in front of the city council prior to the P&amp;Z Board meeting. So our city attorney is abundantly comfortable with the process that we're taking. Now regarding the, well, I just wanted to make those points.
Thank you.
I won't go into everything else.
All right.
Unless there's specific questions.
Do you have any presentation you are wanting to make, sir?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am chairman. A lot of the things that we've already talked about here prior to the formal presentation is contained in here, so I'm going to go through it and kind of hit some of the high points, and certainly be available for any questions. And as, as both of the speakers this evening have already discussed, a very, very important part of local planning in the process is public participation. I mean, that's an integral part of what we do. As, as the board members know, we hold public hearings to allow the public to come and speak, and, because this truly is a, a, a process, and it truly does affect properties. And for that reason, the city ordinance has a specific section and specific minimum requirements that the city must follow when we, for, for all of our different types of land use procedures. And that's, those specific standards are right here on the first page of your, of your report. And so I won't go into all of those, but basically, it's posting the property, posting the city hall and the city official's website, and then notifying property owners within 500 feet. And typically, we do that with first-class mail. However, with zoning, when we're rezoning a piece of property, the requirement is to send out certified letters for property owners within 500 feet. And I think it's important to note, too, that all of these requirements that are in here, the code refers to them as courtesy notices, not required by law. And why is that important? Because the code goes further and states that if any of those, any of those noticing processes aren't met, it's not grounds for appeal of a city decision on a zoning standard, or a zoning decision. That's an important point. So all of these items are courtesy notices. And I will say, too, that the, you know, besides the city standards and city minimum requirements, the state has promulgated minimum standards that must be met. And the, currently, our standards are above and beyond what the state requires, and as amended, will still be above and beyond state requirements.
Do you have the state's requirements at your finger trip?
Yeah, they're in section.
What are they? Just, just refresh us on the state requirement.
It is a posting, a posting.
Property.
Be ready to jump in on, jump in here with me. It is posting of the, of the, at city hall and on the city's official website.
Well, with respect to rezonings, there are specific advertisement requirements that would certainly serve to notice the public. So, and that would depend on what type of rezone you're looking at. If it's an applicant-initiated, meaning a private party-initiated rezone, there would be at minimum one newspaper advertisement. If it was a city-initiated rezone, and it was over 10 acres of land that was being affected, there would be at minimum two newspaper advertisements. So, so the state law also does deal specifically with rezones in that matter.
Yeah, and there's also state requirements for what are called comprehensive plan amendments. Those really have to be display ads with maps that have to be included. So, and those are all met as well. We certainly abide by those standards. Those are all included. I think it's in Chapter 162, those advertisement standards are promulgated.
166.041.
All right. 166.041. Thank you. You know, in the bottom paragraph on the first page, I'd like to read that, because I think that's, this is really the meat of really why we're here. As indicated, blah, 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 this can add a great deal of cost to the process, and we're talking about certified mail return receipts. In particular, with large-scale requests, as an example, "The city is considering a large-scale rezoning project to address over 700 non-conforming commercial properties." When the 500-foot radius is applied, as indicated in Paragraph 3, which spells out our standards, over 5,000 properties would be included. And Mr. Morrison was correct. That is not a, that is not a, that number is not a specific number. There is over 5,000. I think the last, I want to say the last count we had was closer to 9,000. "As a result, United States parcel service mailing costs to the public would total approximately $37,500." And that's based on the $7.50 per certified return receipt letter negatively impacting limited public resources. And even though that, and that's another item that Mr. Morrison mentioned, was that didn't feel like you were getting all the information and how we got to these numbers. And that's, I'd like to verbally have that opportunity to put it into the record. Yeah, the 7.50 is, Chairwoman indicated that approximately, the approximate cost for a return receipt certified letter is approximately $6.80 or so. We calculated about 70 cents a letter in staff time. And there's a, there's a great deal of staff time that goes into certified letters. First is generating the mailing list, which also we would do with first class. So that's kind of, that's kind of a wash. The next is actually preparing the correspondence, the letters. If any of you have sent a certified letter return receipt recently, there's a great deal of work that goes into applying all the necessary postage and information on those letters. And then, so those are all sent out. And then receiving those letters back, we have to take the label and put those into the appropriate folder. So there's quite a bit of staff time involved with sending out a certified return receipt letter. And so we calculated roughly 70 cents plus the 6.80 for 7.50.
So Dave?
Yes.
I hear you saying that that's approximately 70 cents per man hour, not per single man hour. Is that correct?
Yeah, 70 cents of staff time per letter would be.
Okay, so conceivably several staff members involved in this?
Yes.
And so we're not talking about the months?
No, 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 no. Right now, Patsy handles a lot of that. And what was the last, the last mailing we sent out was certified. I mean, she got it done in a couple of hours, but obviously it wasn't 9,000 pieces.
But it was about 500.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, that's just going at it. I mean.
And that was two hours worth of work.
Do you remember how long you spent?
It was more than two hours.
It was more than two hours.
I would imagine.
It was two hours.
Yeah, it was a lot more.
But you have to put the label on the letter itself, then on the certified green card, then the return address for the certified. I mean, it's a lot, yeah, and, yeah.
So, Mr. Dickey, if I can ask a question. In the process we're doing now, do we wait for the return receipt to come back from everyone?
No.
So by the time the hearing comes, we may not have them all back. We don't know if those people got that notification or not, but we continue with the hearing?
That's exactly correct. And that was a point that was made at the first reading of city council. I mean, we deal with a lot of certified letters return receipt, in particular in our code enforcement process. And oftentimes, folks either refuse certified letters because they probably, they may know what's in them, or they just don't want to be bothered by them. So, yeah, there is no guarantee that the person on the other end is going to receive that letter. The only thing that we do have is, the ones that do sign for it, we have proof of that.
And I think with that comes, if the individual is not at home, the mailman will not leave it. They leave a little note on the door that you have to go to the post office. So if they don't ever make it to the post office, they've not received notification. If we're in regular mail, that mailman's going to put it in their mailbox. The odds might be better they actually receive it.
That's my understanding as well of how it works.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Dickey? Mr. Russell?
Okay. How many rezonings have we done? Just ballpark number, a dozen in the last year?
Yeah, no. Lamar, since I've been here in five years, we've probably done one a year.
Yeah. And it's usually a small scale.
Yeah, there's usually fif, there's usually less than 100, 100 pieces.
Now, we're going to have to look at the, this business of all the, this issue, we got all the businesses with, they need to have their, what do we call that issue? Where everybody's regulations need to be adjusted, or we need to adjust the zoning or regulations? What do we call that issue?
We're calling that kind of our non-conforming commercial rezoning.
Non-conforming commercial. So we're working through all those businesses and parcels just right now without any commitment on your part, but just for discussion. Are we looking at rezoning, or are we looking at just regulation adjustments?
We're looking at rezoning all of those parcels.
Okay. So we're going to have to do a lot of notification on that issue. That's going to be a big cost. And the city will have to pay for, pay that one, because that's us doing the rezoning, not an applicant. So just a point. If somebody else wants to rezone, or a private individual, then they get to pay the $7.50 per receipt, right?
Yeah, that is, as I believe it was Mr. Campbell indicated, or maybe it was Wes, I don't recall, Mr. Morrison, that is a pass, currently, we handle that as a pass-through cost.
So the individual request for rezoning, it gets passed through. For the city doing the rezoning, we pay that cost. Okay. Now, this massive rezoning that, well, I don't know whether the word massive is appropriate, but it's a pretty good-sized rezoning that we're going to look at for the whole entire commercial district, to get everybody's non-conformances fixed, so that they don't have any clouds on their insurance or their deeds. So, we're going to send out those, as it stands now, we'd send out a certified communications to everybody concerned.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Right. What do you estimate that cost is going to be? Have you had a chance to look at it yet?
Well, we did. We ran the numbers, and it's approximately $37,000, as we currently, our practice today would cost us $37,000.
Okay. But if we changed the ordinance, you wouldn't pay that. You'd just use regular postage. What's that cost? Just?
It is, it would be approximately...
We won't hold you these numbers. We're just talking.
It was approximately, we discussed that at the city council meeting, it was approximately 70, 30 plus 80 cents per piece of mail for first class. So 80 cents times.
$4,000?
Yeah, $4,000 to $5,000.
Okay.
Approximately.
Like an order, order of magnitude less. Okay. All right. I'm not going to die on this hill. I am not going to work really hard for one way or the other yet. We're just talking. We're banding numbers back and forth. We're looking at what's in front of us, and how those notifications are going to get worked. But those notifications have got to be worked regardless of the cost. Got to notify the people concerned, whether you do it by certified or not. Now, we have advertisement, we have posting on the property, we have the website. And from my viewpoint, over all the years I've been here, a citizen can be as informed as they want to be. And I really wish they wouldn't come in and say we weren't notified. And we've had that happen. Why doesn't somebody notify us? Well, you can't spoon-feed everybody. So my point is, you can be as informed as you want to be if you live in this town and own property. No excuse for not being informed. But that's the personal viewpoint. If the majority of us want to keep certified mail, and that's okay with me, I don't have to pay it. And I'm not going to get in front of that issue if it comes down to it. It's just a matter of dollars and cents. But you got to keep in mind, the workload did not go away. You can do certified, or you can do not certified, but you still got to do the work. You got to notify the people, you got to log out the mail, mailing, and you got to pay for the advertising. It's going to be a pretty good advertisement campaign. So the workload doesn't go away. So our issue is, how do we want, how do we want to pay for it?
Mr. Russell?
Yes, I'm done.
I would say that you're correct. Workload continues in both situations. When you're doing regular mail, it's a matter of a label on the envelope and running it through the meter. When you're doing certified return receipt, there's two to three pieces of paper that must be completed, signed, put in specific places on the envelopes, stamped certified mail. And I would, I would say, and I think you're agreeing with me, while there is work still to be done, certified mail certainly takes a lot more of our staff time to do it than regular mail. Any other board members have any?
I have some thoughts, just looking at, through the actual proposed revisions, the language here. We're talking now about certified mail versus regular snail mail. And I don't have a particular attachment to certified mail, but it looks to me like, in the actual language, we're allowing in some cases for email to stand in and close to regular mail. And I don't know what the process is for getting email addresses, but I know a lot of us have settings on email that you don't just get every email that you're sent. So I would hate to see something like this go into somebody's junk mail. And so that's the only part of the issue that, that particular language, and what I can see is two spots. That gives me concern that we're not doing our best to be open and spreading the information if we're actually just going to send out. Snail mail can get lost, but at least it's a physical item that goes to that address, have on file. But email seems like not one of the best.
Mr. Dickey, do you have a response for that, or some answers for Ms. Bass?
Yeah, I do. First is Melissa. I see the reference to email on line 12 of Page 2 in the ordinance. You mentioned another one.
Well, just, I think it's just the first statement of it on the page before, before it's actually shown in the changes.
Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, that's, that's the only location I'm familiar with in the proposed ordinance, where we do make a provision for email. And if you look, it's the actual owner of the subject property. And generally, they are very, very involved with the process of rezoning a piece of property. My experience with the, with the owner is, where we get that email from is the actual application that they submit to us. So my assumption would be that that would be a correct, living, breathing email.
If the city is doing the change, then the owner would only know if the city notifies them, right?
Um.
Am I reading it wrong? I'm just, the two different cases. You know, the city does some, but then...
I see what you're, so your concern is that with the city, with this proposed city rezoning, this says the owner, so what you're suggesting is, the city could, by this ordinance, we could email those 9,000 properties?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm reading.
Okay.
Is that not what we're saying?
Yeah, no, that's not what we're saying. No.
Do you have everyone's email?
Yeah, Florida, Florida state.
How do you guys know if you have the right email for someone? They change that.
Got you. That would be a problem.
So what is this saying?
Yeah. Typically, what happens is an applicant, there's a single applicant. A property owner has applied for a rezoning. And we would inform them of the hearing. We can, as this is written, we could either inform them with a regular mail or a email. And I don't have a, I don't necessarily have a concern with that, because we're working almost on a daily basis with these property owners as we're moving this, their rezoning request through the process. We work with them.
It says that you, that they, certified mail is currently required for them.
Yes, it is currently required for them. Correct.
Well, you say property owners, that's great. But it's the outlying neighboring properties that.
Well, it depends on which, who's driving the change.
Right. What Melissa is suggesting is that this proposed large-scale rezoning that we're doing, we're dealing with 9,000 owners. And as Melissa is reading this, the city could just go ahead and fire off an email to all of them, and that would serve our public notice.
That's what it looks like to me.
Yeah. Well, I think we're going to expand. We'll clarify that.
So I think, actually, if we were dealing with an area-wide rezone, right, that was affecting many people, you would be using Section D, which is, requires regular mail to the owner.
Okay.
So the email would only be dealing with more of a, more site-specific rezones. There could be a situation where it was still city-initiated, but it would not be a mass, you know, rezoning at, or large scale.
Yeah, thank you.
That we would be using that.
That's, that's exactly right. And if you notice in the ordinance on Page 2 of 3, starting on Page 22, there's a new section of the ordinance that's being proposed. It's all underlined. It's all new. And that is to handle these large, area-wide rezonings that we're talking about. So you can see, the email option is not even available under that process. So, so I hope that addresses your concern.
Thank you. Ms. Bass, do you have anything else?
I think I'm clear now.
Mr. Price?
No.
Mr. Pearson?
No, no more comments.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Russell, you have another one? Sure?
Since we're in open discussion.
Absolutely.
I don't feel bad about asking too many. Okay, let's look and see what's in front of us. If we go, if we keep certified mail, and we get through this large-scale rezoning we were talking about, then the cost of certified mail notifications goes back down to noise level again. Because right now, it's basically noise level. It's not the biggest thing we do, but it's a piece of work. And it costs money.
Yes.
All right. So we get through the big rezoning. It's going to be a lot of work and cost, at a large cost. And if we do that with certified mail, we'll pay that cost, and then we'll go back down to regular rezoning traffic, which ain't much. And certified mail would go back to noise level, but everybody would get notified that wanted to be notified under those regs. So why are we straining so hard at this? We could keep certified mail and not be that worse off. That's an opinion. You can come back on me and argue that if you like. I've been known to be wrong before. Having said that, maybe we ought to want to, we all want to breathe deep and walk away and think about this again.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, as I said earlier, or someone said, that really the whole motivation we're here this evening is because of this large-scale project we have coming. is because of this large-scale project we have coming up. And the basically, the basic question is, does the, do we, does this P&amp;Z Board and does the City Council feel it's appropriate and acceptable to spend X dollars on a certified mail for this large administrative rezoning process? Or, does the P&amp;Z Board and the City Council feel it appropriate to look for opportunities to save money, still meet the intent, and still get the word out, and save a great deal of money? I mean, that's really the bottom-line question here.
Can I have a thought?
I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I just interrupted, sorry.
Just a real quick comment. First of all, Lamar, I just want to say I disagree with you a little bit in that you and I are paying for this, you know, our city taxes.
Exactly.
So, we pay for this. And I think the city has a responsibility to spend our tax dollars wisely. And it's a question about return on investment. If, if by sending certified mail provides us with, you know, a guaranteed 100% response or a noticeably substantial response, then maybe it's warranted in terms of ROI. I don't know, I don't have a good feeling for that. But I know for a fact that people nowadays have fewer and fewer home mailing addresses. They have post office boxes. People nowadays are more and more transient than they used to be. People nowadays are spending a lot more time on electronic mail, emails, social media, that type of stuff. Even Florida Today is cutting back on their publication amount and suggesting that people subscribe to the electronic newspaper. So, if using certified mail would provide us with a good return on investment, then I'm all for it. If it doesn't, I'd just soon not have my money wasted that way.
Well, if you base the case on dollars and cents, you make a great case. And I don't mind the disagreement. Not a problem. As I said, I'm not going to die on this hill. I can argue it either way. If you look at it from dollars and cents, you've got a great case. But if you look at it from a comfort level, and our neighbors have come in and said they'd be more comfortable with certified mail, then you go that way. I don't know how big the groundswell is. We've got a councilman, and we've got a neighbor here who's made a pretty good case. Don't know how big the groundswell is, I mean, which, now you boil it down. You want to make it dollars and cents, or you want to make it comfort level for the neighborhood?
Bass, did you have something else?
Just along similar lines, I think. Just as the folks that spoke from the audience were asking for an alternative, saying that this change from certified mail to just snail mail isn't enough, and with our, hopefully, our efforts to be a transparent organization here, there's got to be something else we can do. Maybe we can put some language into this document that gives us, that holds us to doing things like more than just putting it on the website. I mean, the, I'm not saying that social media is everything, but maybe Facebook in 10 years is something different. But maybe we can put language in here that requires it to be posted on the city Facebook page. That thing gets a lot of traffic. I know a lot of people that, that's the only way they know anything's going on. They don't even drive by this building and see the marquee. So, maybe we put something in there that talks about spanning past, putting it on the website. Maybe we put it on the social media. Find other ways to get the information out in a modern way. That shouldn't cost any more than labor time.
Well, Melissa, I found, in talking to my neighbors, that people read that editorial page, that if you don't read anything else in the paper, you generally go to that page.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't get the paper. I don't read it.
I read the headlines.
All right.
I've got nothing.
Well, I was about to suggest.
I think we're talking to several generations up here.
Right, and so, I think the variety of communications are good, because we do have a wide range of generations in this town. But let's listen to these people that ask for an alternative, and let's try to give them one.
I think you're absolutely right. It should be part of the Facebook page notification. And I know tonight's meeting was posted on the Facebook, as well as the council meetings. I would be concerned about specifically listing Facebook in there, because does everyone remember MySpace?
Right.
That was the big thing.
Right, right. Yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dickey.
I was just going to add, I do think, you know, there is, as Madam Attorney had said, some requirements on posting in publications. Typically, if it's similar to what I'm used to, it's the most-read newspaper, or generally-read newspaper. I think one of the biggest things, and it goes back to, I think, Mr. Russell, you said this, if people really want to be informed, reading our website and the weekly notice that Mr. Suprant puts out is two of the best places to find out what's going on in this city. You know, if you have an interest, looking for it on the, I personally go out, even before joining this board, and look regularly at the website. I get the Suprant, Mr. Suprant's weekly email, and read it completely through. So, I think there are a lot of other options or alternatives, as being said. The money is, I think, one of the biggest issues. And even the 500 piece that was mentioned earlier, and if you do it at the 750, that costs $3,750 for that mailing. If we'd done it at the lower rate you had said for general, which was 80, was $400. If you just take it to the postage, we're talking $3,400 versus about $300. So, when you do talk about, we pay for it. The citizens of this city will pay for anything that's coming from the citizens. And drive down any of our streets. A big portion of our residents are not of the upper-middle-class and wealthy, or the 1%. We have a lot of residents who are in the middle-class and lower. And it helps them as well, if they're making a single application, to reduce it. And I do think, as the paperwork said in here, everybody get their cocoa water bill this month? Lots of other people. I do, too. But you sign up for it, so. I think when you start looking cost-benefit, you have to look at, you have to do a cost-benefit. Is the cost worth it? And I haven't seen any evidence to support spending that much money forward is making it worthwhile. Yes, Mr. Dickey?
Madam Chairman, I would like to, and Melissa raises some very good issues and some points as well. We currently do include, at least two weeks prior to a meeting where we're going to be discussing a rezoning, both for the P&amp;Z Board as well as the City Council. Those are in our weekly updates. Those are already in there. And they're also in our Instagram page. So, I think that, I hear what Melissa is saying. And if we can come up with some generic language to include in the ordinance, we'd be happy to do so, because we currently are doing this. But if we can codify what Melissa is talking about, I think that would be acceptable, completely acceptable, to look at how we could tweak the ordinance to go a little bit further than what, how the ordinance currently reads.
Right.
So, if that wants to be, if you'd like to make that, depending on what the Board wants to do, if that wants to be, if that needs to be part of a motion or whatever, we can certainly do that.
Tell us again, Melissa, what you wanted to add to the language.
Include, in addition to snail mail information, or make an electronic information dissemination further than just... The website, sorry. So, in addition to the regular mail, to include the website, which is already listed, but also to include social media or electronic notification past just the website.
Yeah, our various social media platforms?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd be, I understand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dickey. If I can recommend, wherever it says posting at City Hall and on the city official website, perhaps it should be posting at City Hall and on city's official website and social media pages. Ms. Bass?
Seems to me that would cover it. And maybe in the weekly update, or equivalent, if we still call it the weekly update in five years.
Okay.
So, posting at City Hall, on the city's official website, social media page, social media, and the weekly update.
I'm not, I'd like to, I don't want to unequivocally discuss the weekly update.
Say that because it goes away?
Because that is a, that is a practice that our current city manager implemented. And, you know, if our, if, when and if we, that may change someday in the future. I, I'm...
Then we would have to re-change this.
Right, right.
So, is there a way to say any kind of electronic information?
Yeah, I understand what you're, I understand what you're looking for. Let me work with the city attorney's office and see what we can do to come up with some appropriate language. Pardon?
Does that delay us tonight?
I think it would.
No.
Because how can we vote if we don't know what it says?
We can recommend approval based on contingent on, you know, the things that you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments from board members?
I'm afraid so. I lost my train of thought. I guess if it's important, it'll come back. No, now that, is there a timeframe on this? Do you need to get this done quickly so you can avoid that certified mail out?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to act quickly. I was going to suggest, take it away, let's think about it, come back and workshop it a little bit more. But I guess we've about beat it to death tonight.
All right. Any other comments from board? Mr. Pearson, you haven't weighed in yet.
I have no comment. We'll, I'll go with whatever we've got.
All right. Well, no more discussion? Do I have a motion?
Approve the document with the contingent changes.
Okay, Ms. Bass has moved to approve contingent on the suggested changes, including social media and some language to adopt that with perhaps other notifications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pearson? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Co-roll on it? Thank you, Mr. Price. Can you call roll, please, Ms. Huffman?
Lamar Russell?
I'm for it.
Harry Pearson?
For.
Melissa Bass?
For.
John Price?
For.
Penny Zirkel?
For. So, passes unanimously. All right, so now we move on to, that's the end of new business, reports in open discussion. Does anyone have any reports or open discussion on the board?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
I was cut off before. But I'd like to see if Dave can put us, where are we currently in applicants for the vacancies on this board? Plus, we are looking at people being termed out during the remainder of this year. We, we did have one applicant kind of floating there in December. The name was Palmer. At the moment, we, I don't, I don't know of any that are possibly moving toward becoming members of this board.
Mr. Dickey?
Yeah, members of the board, we've, yeah, currently, obviously, it's, we have two openings. And we really don't have a pool of applicants to choose from at the moment. I'm also facing the same challenge on our community appearance board. I have talked to a few people about their interest in, their interest in that board. And I'm working, I have two people potentially for that board. So, that's going to be good, because we're getting down to a point where we can't even get a majority. We can't even get a quorum, and that's a problem. So, I think that that board is kind of going to take care of itself. It's this board. So, I am actively out the community, beating the bushes, looking for interested folks for the planning and zoning board. So, I'm going to give my plea, I've given many times, to the board. If you know of anybody who you think would be a good fit, would represent the residents of Cape Canaveral, who has, you know, ideally, it would be nice to have someone with an affiliated occupation or degree or profession that could kind of hit the ground running. But that's not always the case, but that's ideal. So, I would encourage you to kind of go through a mental process of acquaintances and people you know and run across. If you think there's anybody that would be appropriate, please encourage them to fill out a board application. And we do have a few people floating around, but the challenge I have is that, as you may recall, in the second page of the application, there's four or five or six boards that are listed. And oftentimes, the P&amp;Z Board is not the number-one choice of these folks. It's down, down, down into the, into the bottom. And so, we generally don't want to put somebody on a board that they're not particularly interested in. That really may not be a good long-term situation. So, that's kind of weeded out a few people that have applied for boards. But I hope I answered your question. It's a challenge right now. Challenge.
There are applicants that are in the pipeline as we're, that we are looking at, or you are looking at. You have other, other boards, of course.
Yeah, I don't have any great, I don't have any strong candidates for the P&amp;Z Board at the moment. That's why I'm kind of reaching out and saying, hey, let's work together.
What's the term-out summary for this board? Do you have it?
No, it's, I can provide that to the board. It's on our membership roster, and it actually shows when each of, each of the board members was appointed, and then your term-out date. I believe that Lamar and John are terming out later in 2019. There we go, perfect. Thank you, Patsy. Yeah, I know, once again. Okay.
You did get our flowers, right?
Yes, we're...
Yeah, Happy Administrative Assistance Day.
Yeah, thank you. John Price's term expires 9/15/19, September of this year. Lamar, same date. Melissa, 9 of 20. Harry, 9 of 20. Penny, 9 of 21.
Now, termouts can be extended.
Yes, they can. Yes, they can. If there is not a, a applicant that is, would be an appropriate fit for the board, then we can extend terms based on strengths of current members and what they bring to the board. So, yes.
So, with five board members, it's likely that we would be extended if we want to be.
If things don't improve by September.
I'm sorry, Penny, can I, can I?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
One of the things that you might do would be post on Josh's weekly update and on our social media stuff and that kind of thing.
It's a great idea.
Kind of advertise for that. Because I, I can tell you that nobody, unless they go out of their way, knows that there are positions open on any of the boards.
We currently do advertise our vacancies on our boards, on, on the city website. But we'll, we'll look to see if there's any opportunities to expand that reach.
I do think Facebook may be an excellent, excellent opportunity.
Maybe you go out for food. I'm just thinking about people I know, if they don't want to go anywhere at night.
Well, we could take turns providing food. I'm not sure the city can legally provide us food.
Not a, not a real option. I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I've, I mean, I have worked in, with, with, primarily in a county government setting, where they have a lot of meetings, both the commission and as well as the P&amp;Z Board meet during the day. But that's, you know, there's pluses and minuses to that. So, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Reports?
Nothing more for me.
Okay. Mr. Russell? Mr. Price? Ms. Bass? None for me. Well, nothing else to discuss. I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Congratulations again.